... 9th, 2020, regular meeting of the Marlboro City Council Board. If you will all stand and pledge their allegiance to our president.
I pledge my allegiance to the law.
The United States of America. To the republic which is made one nation under God, indivisible, in the great [inaudible].
Feedback from the audience. Especially when you expect it to be an echo, but it's not your voice. You've all had a chance to look at the regular section minutes for May 26th, as well as the work session minutes for May 26th. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight? Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Motion passed as announced. On the meeting agenda, the approval for the June 9th, 2020 meeting agenda, where we will add the June 10th proclamation as 3A and reclassify the sickle cell proclamation as 3B. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Motion passed as announced. Item 3A, it will be a Juneteenth proclamation, which will be read by Councilwoman Dorothy Dean.
I think I'll stand. Respect the doctor. Proclamation, Juneteenth, whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in the Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And, whereas two and a half years later, on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, to announce and enforce the freeing of the slaves, and this day has become a significant day of remembrance and acknowledgement of the history, freedom, culture, strength, perseverance, and achievement of the past, present, and future generations of the African-American community. And whereas, the day is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, as has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years, making the oldest known public celebration and the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, Juneteenth not only commemorates African-American freedom, but celebrates the successes gained through education and greater opportunity, and recognizes a liberation from oppression that manifests in ways such as access to loans, jobs, means of self-employment, and the ability to own land. And whereas, on a larger scale, celebration of Juneteenth reminds each of us of the precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity, which are at the core of the American dream. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Marlboro, Mayor and Council, this day, June, this ninth day of June 2020, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth in the City of Marlboro, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation.
Ms. Knight, I believe you have a copy of the proclamation as well?
I do, I do. But I did want Councilwoman Dean to kind of speak and connect with us for the importance of the day and the proclamation to her personally. I did want her to have the opportunity to do that with the proclamation if we could.
Councilwoman Dean, I think she wants you to speak. [inaudible].
I put you on the spot there, didn't you?
Yes, she did. Well, Juneteenth, for me, has been a longstanding tradition in my family. My generation, my daughter's generation, grandmothers, great-grandmothers, I'm going to do Sylvia. It has meant that black people in America was free from slavery, which had been here for as many years as we know that black Americans were in this country. And to have that day, Juneteenth, as a day of independence, it's something that I have taught my daughter, something that she's teaching her son, and something that we need to keep as a day of history to remember, that without freedom and without a proclamation to remind people that slavery is something that is still lurking and it can't happen again. So I spoke with Renee and told her that sickle cell anemia is important in the black community. It is a medical condition, and hopefully, one day, we'll find a cure for that. But slavery is something that we all have to consciously be aware of and want to make sure that it never happens again in this country or around the world. So that's why it's important to me, and hopefully, people will understand what it means.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, Ms. Dean. So I did want to read the proclamation, proclamation, Sickle Cell Awareness Day. Whereas, the health and safety of all residents of the City of Marlboro is important to the happiness, prosperity, and well-being of our city's families and communities. And whereas, sickle cell disease is the most common blood disorder which affects hemoglobin occurring in about one out of every 365 African-American birth, and one out of every 16,300 Hispanic-American births. And whereas, this disease is most common among people whose ancestors come from Africa, Mediterranean countries, the Arabian Peninsula, India, and Spanish-speaking regions of South America, Central America, and parts of the Caribbean. And whereas, according to the American Society of Hematology, approximately 3 million Americans carry the sickle cell trait. And whereas, early stratification of a child with sickle cell disease, coupled with antibiotic prophylaxis by three months of age and early intervention services, helps those with sickle cell disease while researchers continue to search for a universal cure. And whereas, Sickle Cell Awareness Day will help raise public awareness of individuals and families affected by this disease. And whereas, the City of Marlboro remains dedicated to the provision of sickle cell screening, education, and medical care for individuals and families living with sickle cell disease through its support of the Georgia Department of Public Health Newborn Screening Program and the MTS Sickle Cell Foundation. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, John Lample II, Mayor of the City of Marlboro, this ninth day of June 2020, do hereby celebrate June 19th, 2020, as National Sickle Cell Awareness Day, and urge all citizens to join the city in recognition of this important day.
Thank you, Ms. Knight.
And so I did want to take the opportunity to connect the dots, the personal dots for myself, and I have Mapillar Dawn from the MTS Sickle Cell Foundation. I am, as a black person, in my youth, I had blood work done, and I am a sickle, I do have, carry the sickle cell trait myself. So it's always been something that's been on my radar as a condition in the black community. I have close friends, I have a very close friend, who in fact, her son has sickle cell disease, and I've watched, I've watched the difficulties that he's encountered and the hardships with regard to health, and also with regard to healthcare as he's grown older. I did want to bring this disease to our attention in the city, not to take away from the overall celebration of Juneteenth, but to acknowledge sickle cell disease itself, because the Sickle Cell Awareness Day does fall on the same day. So I did want to turn over the floor for a brief moment to Mapillar Dawn, so that she can provide some information to us as well.
This is Mapillar, and I am very, very happy right now to sit with you, virtually. Sickle cell disease is like Renee's, very personal for me and my family. I have three beautiful daughters who also suffer from this disease. And they owe my wife for doing everything that I can to not only bring awareness to sickle cell disease, but also bring awareness to the socioeconomic plight of the sickle cell community. And so through our organization, we are very passionate about awareness and supporting families. We, as a global community, are very grateful to the City of Marlboro for this proclamation in the world, especially as a community that struggles both within the medical community and within the general community, to really get support. So I'm very emotional right now, I'm sorry. But I want to thank you guys very much. This means so much. This means the world. And so I want to, I want to say, we're here to help the City of Marlboro bring awareness. If there's anything that we can do as an organization, we have a lot of resources that we can provide to really help the community learn about this disease that's still disproportionately affecting the sickle cell, the black community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Make sure she gets her [inaudible]. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mapillar. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Item number four, approval and authorization to execute engagement letter with Baldwin and Jenkins for the FYI 2020 financial audit. You've had the piece of paper in front of you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Motion passed as announced. Item number five, approval and authorization to execute agreements with Sun Life Financial, which was a recommendation from the city staff for dental, life insurance, and for short-term disability.
Invision.
Invision.
Aye.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Ms. Knight? Ms. Tran? Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, authorizing Sun Life Financial for short-term disability. This will be a little bit different. We've had before us sanitation service for the City of Marlboro. We have put that out for proposals over a series of months. We've had several different contracts, and it was Republic, Waste Pro, and Advance.
Advance and Latham in combination.
Advance and Latham. And you've got a chance to look at each one of them. We now have an idea of what it would cost each one of our residents. We've answered questions back and forth. Does anyone care to make a recommendation for a particular company?
Do we have all the information that we need, or... She's asking if they have all the information that they need.
Are those who we?
We, as, she needs a council.
Ms. Tran, do you have a recommendation?
[inaudible].
Ma'am?
I don't think she can.
Has anybody else have a recommendation?
The staff's recommendation, considering all the prices and our concerns over the last contract with having the service split between two companies, which didn't work out as ideally as we'd hoped, the staff recommendation is Waste Pro.
Any comments? Staff recommendation is Waste Pro. No comments.
We have a question. With Waste Pro. Then once, you said, twice a month?
To the once in a while?
Yeah, the once in a while.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, staff recommendation is for Waste Pro. Do I hear a motion? I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Ms. Knight? Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Motion passed as announced. We will enter into contract negotiations with Waste Pro. I understand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for everyone who did participate. Y'all, I'm in there and did a really good job. I appreciate you very much. Item number seven is going to be a public hearing and a first reading of ordinance 2020-05, which is the fiscal budget for fiscal year '21, which is the next year's budget. We will open the floor to public comments. If somebody just wanted to glance at one real quick, here it is. As I stated earlier, we've got challenges, and we've done the best we can, working with the department and the city staff, the city council. I assure you, not everybody got everything they wanted, right? Just simply, the money's not there to do it. But on the other hand, I also assure you that we didn't rob anybody, you know, where we left any particular thing holding, where, you know, we operate the city, but we can't cut your grass. So I think it's a delicate balance. Obviously, depending on how the economy performs moving forward, you know, we will have to stay diligent with that, everybody. Because if we make a miss, this won't be a small miss, we'll miss it by several hundred thousand dollars, and then we'll have to figure out how to make that up, and life will be more complicated next year, and we'd rather not. So hopefully, we made the tough decisions, and it's a balance. Certainly, as the public, you know, you have a right to not only read it, we encourage you to, you know, it's your city. There are ways this city makes money, and most of it is commercial. So residentially, we don't pay quite so much, but commercially, they do. Those are the ones who got hurt the most, so far, right? And we need to have, you know, growth to be able to move a city forward, not just this year. And I know we talked early on, when we started doing the discussions on pleasure, that, you know, over the last decade, this city lost $250 billion worth of assets back. That's a fact. So the school system lost, the Clayton County lost, the Marlboro lost. Your home value was pretty much stacked. I think we used a lady's residence over in Central Park, and she was able to sell property for basically what she paid for, you know, over a 14-year period. You know, that's unacceptable, you know, if you were putting that money in a bank for somebody to hand you back what you paid for, especially when, you know, other people could have chosen different communities, and they could have gotten a return of $30,000 to $50,000. So now we've got another step back, right? The world is stepping back, it's not just us. And we want to assemble, you know, at 18, and with that 18, with the resources we have available, we're going to, we're going to make sure, next time around, we're going to give it everything we got. So that's the goal. There's a little in there for everyone, not everything you want. If we happen to pull through, that'll be great, but that's all, if we all knew what that was, we'd go play the lottery tomorrow night, because we'd have to make that kind of a [inaudible]. Public hearing is open. Any party want to have a comment? Department heads want to comment?
No.
Afraid to comment?
Not at all.
Essie want to comment? No, we're going to go all the way down, all the way to the court.
[inaudible].
That being said, we will close the public comments section, and we'll go into general comments. City manager?
So, Councilwoman Dean, is it time for real coffee and real donuts tomorrow morning, or should we keep it virtual?
Virtual.
Virtual it is. City manager remaining?
Tonight was tomorrow's. It was really, really emergency.
Okay.
Citizens comments, and Jim.
Me and Duane Collins, thank you, ma'am, for the proclamation for celebrating Juneteenth, that outlawed slavery in U.S. territories in 1865. However, I want you to be aware that we still live in a crisis as African-Americans in the United States. There are two pandemics that we're faced with in America. One is COVID-19, the other is racism and bigotry against African-Americans. It still exists, and we have to do everything in our power to erase racism in America. If we're going to be successful as a country, a city, we're going to have to erase racism. We're going to have to embrace everyone. And we're also going to have to look at police reform. There are too many young African-Americans losing their lives at the hands of policemen. Now, I'm not saying all policemen are bad, but all African-Americans aren't bad either. So I want you to put that in the back of your mind, and keep it in the back of your mind. We have to eliminate racism in America. Thank you.
Lana LeBeck, I live on Twilight Trail, and I just want to thank not only our police chief, our [inaudible]. All the hits, because for me, I just feel that y'all have just taken care of the city marvelously under stressful times. There has been just so much, so much pressure with this illness, and it changes from different person to person how you will respond, how you will fall ill. You don't know how it's going to affect you. So when you're going on a job, even our city employees, you don't know who can be carrying this thing. So you have been under stressful, it's been at the forefront, you look on TV, you see all this rioting, all this carrying on, and they forget about humanity. They forget about the senior citizens, they forget about the youngest child. And for me, I think we have been so fortunate here in Marlboro to have peace. Yes, there is stress. Yes, there is strife, there is racism in all forms of life, but y'all have taken care of. So I want to thank everyone from the City of Marlboro for doing that for us.
Any other comments? City council?
Just want to say thank you to Mayor, Council, and City Manager, City Clerk, for recognizing, helping us to recognize a very important date for the African-Americans. And I usually don't use that word, I usually say blacks in America, black people in America. Because we came here as black people from different parts of the world. You might be from the Caribbean, you may be from Haiti, wherever, you know, but once you get here, you're an American. And so I just, I want people to understand that we have to go there, deal with that, and then come from there, and then we can, we can all find a solution. We can find a solution if we go back and have some dialogue, have some discussion, talk about it. And I think we can, we can all have a grown-up discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, chiefs.
Other members of the council? Ms. Knight?
I do have a comment. I did have the opportunity last Friday to meet with some young people who requested the opportunity to come to City Hall for a peaceful protest. And the opportunity was a great one for me because of the context of everything that is going on. It is, it is very heavy, it's layers of a lot of things, but specifically with regard to us in America and how heavily impacted we are, just the opportunity to hear the frustration, their hurt, and their pain, it's the same hurt and pain that I have as well as a black woman. I appreciate that Marlboro is a very diverse city, and we embrace diversity, but I want us to make sure that, in the name of diversity, we don't have a leaning towards certain groups while neglecting others. We are a very diverse city, we are diverse in our programming, but we can do better with regard to the black community, with regard to programs and events that we offer. So I do challenge the council to make sure that we have that on our radar, because if we are truly a diverse city, then we will embrace all cultures with the uniqueness that we offer in our special events program.
Ms. Tran?
No comments.
I'm going to stick my feet in water, because I can't help myself. You know, 18 minorities were killed in Chicago two years ago, in one single, 24 shot, 18 died. So things are not right anymore. We have to do better. It's tough when it's not your turn.
That's right.
It's crazy.
That's right.
So when bad things happen, and we can blame a whole department, well, they also have the highest amount of divorce rate. It's not an easy job. So when somebody comes in and they've already had lots of different things going on at home, it didn't work today, and then we get in their face, because I don't like to pull every, and I make a point of being obnoxious. At some point, some of these guys aren't going to have the training, it's going to be a bad day, bad things happen. I don't know that I would defund a police department, but I'm pretty damn sure I would take out the Minnesota City Council, because they decide before they decide, which means it's incumbent on us and the different people who have the different discussions, to make sure that our policy works, right? We're relatively new at the top, but the question was asked almost immediately, as soon as you see something bad happen. That wouldn't happen here, because we have the correct policy, correct, Chief? That wouldn't happen here, because we have the correct policy, correct you?
Yes, actually, we've got several progressive policies that have been in place for quite some time. We have had a no-chucko policy for over 14 years, as long as I've been here. We are a state certified law enforcement agency, which sits the bar higher. We're head and shoulders above a lot of other agencies in the country. We do diversity training, de-escalation training, we do psychologicals on our officers before we hire them. We have body cameras on all of our officers. We have cameras in our cars. We periodically unannounced review cameras for the car and the officers as well, too. We do this annually. We report our findings to the state. We do annual force training, but we also do the reporting and analysis of what's it looking like. We use very little force at the city of Marl year over year, year over year, year. And it's my commitment to make sure, as the chief of police, that we continue to do that, and we look at best practices throughout the nation. I'm a little bit taken aback by learning that not all departments are as advanced as we are. We're not perfect, and if we have issues here, I will do, deal with it. I fired two police officers that serve the chief for excessive force. When they did that, they cannot work for me anymore, and if I'm not allowed to do that as chief, you need to find another chief, which I don't think you want to do that. So I'm committed to the training, I'm very committed to the mission and to law enforcement and to serve every single person within our community with the best ability that I have.
So that's our, that's our policy.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect.
Let me finish.
I'm not, I'm not putting the blame on the police department.
Let me finish. That's your policy. Then there is the training. Then there is the fact that we have 35 people. Not all of them are gonna show up to the right one, and that's called your practice. So in the form of practice, just like we saw that guy during the night, right? Justice will be served. He has been charged. Odds are, he will be found guilty, but he has to get through the process. But that practice is one of those things where, you know, we should welcome a review. Does that make sense? Not because bad things happen, but because it's a damn good idea.
That's right.
I would look at it as... If that was my kid, I'd wanna review. So we'll ask for them, okay? I got the police chiefs back, don't worry. I'm worried about the preference. It's just that important. Let's take a peek why we should, okay? And we'll have some private people, you know, citizen involved, and we'll have your people, and we'll have staff. Not this week, we got budgets, right? Let's work our way through stuff that makes sense. All I'm asking for, and with all respect, is let's prepare to basically have, what do they call it, an in-camera inspection? Isn't that what they call it? Somebody else, is that right? And let's make everyone come. I don't like to see a protest. Protests are fine, protests all you want, right? But when you say F the police, or you kill six of them, it's worth a peek. Somebody's wrong, but it doesn't necessarily mean that somebody's wrong, too. You know, they're not the whole department, right? So this city has to be strong on law enforcement. There is no defund the police department. What do you think, you're just not gonna call, or you're not gonna come? It's insane, okay? So we want it to be reviewed, and we want it to be best. At least we can at least honestly tell ourselves when we're done with something dumb or bad happens, you know, we did do our job, okay? And that's my self-talk, sorry about that. Meeting is adjourned, we'll end up with the works. Which is where we talked about some anticipation. We talked about this a little bit earlier, your local option sales tax offset. Here's the part that's very important for you guys to grasp, all right? So in the front page of the paper, you're gonna put out your millage rate. That's your physical number, right? So let's just say we pick a number nine, right? So if we, once the tax rate comes in, if we set it at nine point something, we will set the millage, right? That's one aspect of it, and everybody can do that math, right? Nine point one is higher, eight point nine is lower, easy math, right? But the state of Georgia also has a secondary section in there that says, you know, chief politicians went out there and said, "I'm gonna leave your millage where it was, I didn't raise your taxes." But we had Quas House, and we revalued it at another fifty thousand dollars. I think the tax digest is going up eight percent, is what they're saying. I can leave it at ninety, and I will still take more money? I'll collect more money. That's a tax increase, okay? So the state of Georgia required you to actually have that section in there, too. You will post that in the paper. Our objective is to be roughly a dollar less, give or take, right? The same amount of money, but we're not going to post that we have a tax increase. It will not be a tax increase, okay? It will not be substantially less either. Now, that being said, this isn't us playing around with the numbers. You have a local option sales tax that your citizens and this county enacted years ago, right? We know that the amount of money that people will spend is less, right? So we set the millage at nine, and that's what's posted. And then the amount of money that comes in, dollar for dollar, right? If it's a little more, it offsets, right, Angela? If it's a little less, it offsets less, right? But that's not you raising your taxes or lowering your taxes. That's basically saying that offset comes in, and whatever the number is, is the number is. Realistically, you have to know that with the sales for this year and next year, it's going to be less. So you will have citizens out there who will ultimately might make the argument that, "Last year I paid a thousand dollars, and this year I paid eleven hundred," even though technically, we did not give them a tax increase. But that sales tax number will be less, right? So in great years, it could have been more, and nobody's ever gonna complain about that, 'cause they never know what you lost, other than how much you gave them back. But they would probably know the difference between this year's tax bill and last year's tax bill, okay? So even though we're setting it this way, that is not the city of Marl's fault. That's just how the math works. So very important to know that. And that also includes some of the stuff for this year's set. Then that leads us into the next question. I know a couple weeks ago, we talked, and we said that the impact to this particular current year's budget was not going to be very high. Is that holding up?
Yes, it is, for the most part. I think we'll make it a minimum of a hundred thousand, but right now, we're still sitting with a fund balance earnings at about revenues over expenditures of about 1.3 million. But I mean, I can come up with almost $200,000 of expenditures to eat into that like right now, or something, so... And we still have, I think, and then there were like, I think we were going over the budget, there were some line items in some departments' budgets, and they were saying, "Well, it looks like they didn't spend very much." But they were like, "Oh, well, that bill comes in in June," or something. So you may have a bunch of bills that hit us in June, it's gonna eat into that for the most part. And we still do have like two more payrolls to get through as well, so you've got those expenditures coming, too. And the hotel, not the hotel, but the business license right now, occupational tax license, they're still down by like $378,000 and stuff, so. Few people have paid this month. I mean, they're late, but they're still, compared to, the budget was $975,000, we've only collected $500 and, nevermind, $500, yeah, a little over $500,000 or so, so.
But that one is, because it was me basically the first one here.
Right, and people were paying in June, right? And so they still, some still maybe late paying, so.
So for those of you who get into next year's numbers, when we're looking at it this time, and you look at actual, right? So if Dorothy was supposed to get paid in June, fiscal year ends, she now gets paid in July, it shows up in next year's cash number, right? Which is gonna make next year's numbers in some cases look much better than they actually are. We have got to remember the reason, because we defer to make them, right? So that's just, it's easy to forget. And if you look at it and you make that mistake, first, that amount of money won't come back to you again, and if it's a loss on top of that, the gap will hurt you, okay? So that's important to know. On our fines, in terms of necessity, we're not going back to court until mid this month, right? And that also is gonna be something that's deferred, right? John rode through the red light in April, his court case doesn't get heard until June, and, well, yeah, a long time, right? Because we got so many behind him, and with COVID, we can't all sit here in a room, right? Remember, we're talking about the radio and putting the things in the car? So that also will be a deferred number, and that number could be fairly large. So you're even saying with the business license, with fines and forfeitures, we're still...
Yes, yeah. Well, people cut back on spending, so spending's down.
Good.
Good, so.
I like that. But this is one of those, 'cause you can't make that up. I mean, at some point, you've got a bunch left, and by the time of the clock, it's gonna show up on your number.
Right.
And then what about, you know, before we got here, everybody wanted to foreclose on people's properties. Where is that? What are our collection numbers? How does that improve?
Right now, the receivables is still property tax receivables. The total looks like it's about $172,000 is still on the books.
And how much is still outstanding, roughly?
So that, I mean, that's how much that's outstanding, so.
Okay, so that number came down from what, four something?
Yes, yeah.
So who's counting?
Sir?
Who's calling?
It was, remember, it was a weird turn, Marcano. He did a really good job.
Good, good. I like that. What was the odds of us collecting the last one, seven? I realize it gets marginally...
Right, yeah, yeah. I think we're doing good. It may still take probably a couple more months to get the collateral for us to have, some more phone calls, or some more leak notices or something, get the rest of that in there.
I meant to add one that's not on here, so those who are paid attention to it, right? Now, our development authority owes this city roughly $3 million.
Correct.
There's no way in the world...
Someone's over there writing it off, probably.
Well, and I wanna clear the books up, right? So between now and the end of the month, because we got one more council meeting before then, I want that fixed. So we look at it and say, you know, I don't have to like a lot, right? But I have to be realistic, because that is basically an accounts receivable on our books, and that basically tells an average person who doesn't do the math that you have $3 million more in the bank than you actually do.
Correct.
And it's one thing to sit there and go, "Angela will pay me at the end of the month," versus Angela will pay me never. And then you go, "Well, I'm gonna take all Angela's stuff." And you go, "Well, Angela doesn't have enough stuff to pay you." So, you know, and then you gotta say, "Well, then, whenever that group comes back to being realistic, right, we gotta have them." It's a hole in the ground that we'll never get out.
Right.
So you just look at it and say, "Then let's write it off."
Correct.
And whatever that means, and however we do it, I don't think they're gonna care. You know, that's a cleaning up of the books thing. But on our books, I would imagine the auditors have asked us to look at that, too, already, now.
I haven't, I haven't met the auditors, but normally, they would have, yeah. They would want you to carry something that high for very long, more than a year or two at most. They'd be asking you to write, you need to write it off, or just go ahead and give them the money, you know, say that, you know, yeah, basically, write it off, you know?
Well, the old team is going to have been familiar with it, 'cause we met with the council, you know, in executive session even, and I don't even know that Dorothy and, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Dean and Knight are here then, but the new team, of course, won't be familiar with it, except for, I guess, the working papers.
But I mean, you'll see it on there, where have five of them, or, you know, where they are paying, or paying you.
I want real math. We start from this point, and, you know, obviously, everything that we've done up to a certain point, you do your budgets, you do your staff, and you do, you clean it up, right? And at that point, then, now you can hold people accountable, right? You can go in there and go, "We don't have any excuse for five years yet. We have any excuse from right now."
Right.
And so that's fair, and that's fair to everybody. I think that's fair to the citizens, it's fair to us, it's fair to the development board, and it just says, like, I realize that's an accounting issue. If we have to vote on it, let's vote on it.
Right, yeah.
Two weeks, whatever it is, whatever that is.
Is it something that can be done in that amount of time?
What?
Just like two weeks and have it at the next council meeting?
They can't, they can't have it come down, write it off.
Technically, it's like an expense. I mean, we're basically giving them money, but it's make-believe money, we weren't gonna get any of it.
Right.
So it didn't even cost us anything, at least not this time. Any objection to that? Any issues with that? Any, you know, anybody need an update on that? So then going into this year's budget, you know, in fairness to your citizens, the average person's never gonna be able to read this. They won't be able to, I can't tell you. Interfund transfers get complicated, but I can say with reasonable confidence, you know, your numbers are decent, not a tremendous amount of guessing. So now we just have to make sure the world doesn't fall off the wheels down. All right, getting into the next section, departmental personnel, okay? So now we have a budget. Our citizens, go ahead.
When you were talking about a budget, and I thought you filled it earlier today, the spelling and the format on the form, we just need to go back and touch up a little bit, to weigh out there some rule of law errors.
Yeah, I think I have a comment.
Before you say it, so...
I just want to go through pages, but more, yeah.
We just need to go through it with the fine to come and make sure we catch the rest of it.
Well, let's put some eyes on it, make sure, but you always find something, let's take the easy ones out, give us a little credit, a little bit. Thanks for having me. Departmental personnel. So now that we've got a budget, now the next thing you look at is to be able to say, you know, what positions do we have? We know there are some positions that were open, we know there are some positions that won't be filled, we know there's gonna be some contraction, right? And we wanna make sure we all understand what that is, okay? And some of that happens already, some of that will happen in the future. So you can look at it and say, "Those are your changes, and you talked about your budget." Say, "Well, I got my budget, and now I'm gonna turn it loose." Nope, you're not. What we're gonna do is we're gonna pass a budget, and then right behind that line item, at the end of the month, we're gonna pass a budget freeze and a hiring freeze, right? Because otherwise, you pass your budget, now it then authorized the chief to do whatever he wants. That's what it said. But what we wanna say is, because we don't know if our hell's gonna break loose or not, we still want a lot of control. Now, that doesn't mean he can't operate, that just means he needs a little more brother mayor. You know, "Mom, can I do that?" And then it's a trade. So that's your first part, and then your second part is coming down with positions. So here, we should have a hierarchical chart. Do we have those?
Yeah, I just didn't have time to upload them in Dropbox today, 'cause I had some last-minute changes to do. But we've got, all the departments have sent me their positions and their evaluations, and I just gotta get it up for you guys to look at.
Now, evaluations, we know they're public record, but I prefer those to be in a folder in an office, and if somebody wants to come look at them, go ahead. Does that make sense?
Do you mean the council or people?
People.
Okay, I can, obviously, I can put them on Dropbox for the council to look at.
But if somebody wants one by text, if you're not gonna read it, just...
We're sort of an open book round.
Some library somewhere, you know, where we just don't have one or enough, so that, you know, it's public record, but... And remember, your evaluation matters, right? So as you're starting to have a contracted team, I want the best people that are left, 'cause no matter who they are, you know, your next steps is also moving forward, which means we need to pay our police and fire department. We don't have any money at this point, but it doesn't mean we won't have any money forever. So we wanna say, you know, "Chief Scott, 25 guys, which ones you agree with?" I mean, "All agree," that's what they always say. But in reality, if you're looking at it, you're gonna have someone who are exceptional, you're gonna have a reasonable number that are good, and then somewhere along the lines, you're gonna have a script. Yeah, that just happens, right? John's just having a bad year, you know, so is it John's bad year, or is it John's time to go? So, you know, we wanna make sure that it's also fair, okay? So then that comes down to, so that's positions, a physical number of positions, I wanna see that, all right? Then the other thing is duties, right? So if we have an economy that's collapsing, and let's say part of your job, when the economy was good, we used you 100% of the time. If we're not only gonna use you 50% of the time, I don't want you sitting in the office, right? I wanna use the available remaining portion of that time, right? So that's where your departments have to look at it and say, you know, "This position..." Everybody's always busy, right? Everybody's busy, but being busy and being productive are entirely two different things, right? So we need our A-team on the ground, and we need people productive. And we're not just looking for something for them to do, 'cause there's enough positions that are now vacant, there was people doing something in those positions, and we might have to allocate it to, right? was people doing something in those positions, and we might have to allocate it to, right? So I, I may not be able to get a social media coordinator. Tell me who's our, who it is. We may not be able to have a grant administrator. That doesn't mean we're not doing grants. Tell me who it is. And it can't be you, okay? It can't, right? So, you know, one person doesn't work that way. We'll never get anything done. So fire chief's got some people back there. Somebody might be a grant administrator. Maybe not, but maybe. Let's find out, right? So we know the positions that we're looking for, and, and we want that, right? So the evaluations have to be real, and, you know, just like in the old days, you can not do that, but then that reflects poorly on your evaluation when she does. So y'all have lived through that before. So now it's making sure that your people are right. So you got a budget, you got the right people in the right seat, that doesn't mean you're a bad person. You just can't do the job here. Maybe it's time to move it away. And that's your hierarchical chart. That's why you really have to look at that. So, and, and let's look at one, because we've got one coming up. So we want to do interviews for an economic development director. Quite possibly, economic development should have planning and zoning underneath it. And if Randy's gonna be on your team, that's fine, but he's reporting to the P and Z people. So there's three people right there. That structure makes sense. I'd have to look at the hierarchical chart to see if it's still done now, but I don't know if it is, I don't know if it isn't, you know? And you go, okay, but that's important. So sometime between now and the next two weeks, whenever we meet again, we, we want to make sure that that matches, and that the salaries that we have and the people we have listed in fit in one of those boxes, right? So that's positions. Then right, we have, we have a lot of managerial staff. But if you actually said, how many basic people do we have that don't have a title to it? Not very many, except public works, right? So we have lots of people with titles, and we need to start to figure out, you know, I can't have all managers and nobody to manage, right? So let's make sure that that, because the, the management position comes with, I don't know, a title, but it comes with salary, right? So let's make sure that that is something that we can coordinate with. You also have pay scales. I saw the one in here from the Department of Community Affairs. Did they, did they upload the Dropbox the full set? Or is that one just from like a city of five thousand? How did we pull that in?
If Jasmine, I don't respect her, because I had her full.
Um, so can you ask your question one more time? I'll be trying.
So, so we're, we've got cities here, Fitzgerald, Auburn, Wayne.
Why did you select those?
Um, so they have a range of population size, so we, I went by the range of the population size.
What was your, what was your range?
The range was from five thousand to nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Five thousand to ten thousand.
And there was no way to separate the budget or the.
Yep, yep, that's cool. All right. So, so you all see the, the DCA and the positions of what was uploaded, or you give the full survey?
Uh, that's just what was uploaded, um, and for select positions, that matched what we currently have on our, so that's not every single position, because there were some positions that we don't currently have here.
So would you like maybe the link for just the whole?
No, no, sir, because it's that thick if it doesn't match. Any questions on what we're talking about?
Yeah.
The, the, you know, can, you understand what that is and what that, what that means? Sure, okay.
So basically, DCA asks for different cities to participate in this survey, and they classify them by population, as Jasmine explained. And so it's just a reference point so cities can review other cities similar in size when they're determining their pay scales.
And then we need, you know, because I realize this is a cross-reference, but, you know, how does modern stack up? I'm asking it's a question.
Well, we don't, we don't, we haven't participated in the survey in a while for some reason.
Well, we're not participating in surveys, but.
I would say, I would say you'd get a different answer depending on who you ask, because, you know, and, and.
I'm just stacking up, chief.
Honestly, I'm saying this about the chiefs. Your chiefs feel that we are underrepresented. We have lower competitive salaries than everybody else in our region, field, county. I'm not sure, but I think if we looked at it incrementally, there may be one or two positions where we fall in line, but police and fire do fall under, you know, and, and probably the finance director, probably your city manager. So, you know, it would be a random position now and then that fell in line with it.
But it, but it didn't used to be that way, right?
Oh, no, in our own, in our reputation in, in police world, I can't speak to fire, or any other government.
Well, we'll ask Cameron to say.
Police world was on top. I mean, always other than high school. I was looking at ads. I was a debt chair in Rockville, just got out of high school, and I saw the pay was twenty-eight thousand five hundred. I was like, oh my goodness. I was making sixteen thousand dollars a year as a debt chair. So it was a big deal, real big deal. And I pulled my application back then to get hired. So now, look where I am. It's kind of a wrong extract. And then my wife in Marlboro, too, but I digress. The population thing.
We actually liked her, sir.
We liked her.
I do. The population thing is, uh, it's good to know, but we have over half a million cars that travel through the city every single day. We have to take that into account. We have different issues in metro Atlanta. You know, we're not Riverdale, but we experience the same issues Riverdale does as far as our calls. Same thing for Forest Park. Are they larger in people? Absolutely. But I, I want to have that, like, hey, the lower start, the pay right now for the police officers is fifty thousand dollars a year. Starting pay is fifty. We're ten thousand under that. So.
And, and, and isn't it, isn't it correct to say in Clayton County, we're the lowest paid government organization?
Starting pay, yes.
Yeah, and that's what I.
Except for Lovejoy. I think they might get a little bit behind us, but, but not by much. Clayton County, we experience, you can walk in the door, right at forty-eight to fifty. So, you know, what I see, we need to look at population, yes.
But we are.
That's just DCA's category.
Yeah, but, but it's, you know, because, you know, I don't want to compare the someplace, but I don't have a problem being compared to Cullen. Cullen's nice, yeah. Cully? Cully, probably not so much, you know? Not, not against people from the, the surface place, but, you know, it's South Georgia, it's middle of nowhere. But when you look at the other things that we don't have, so they paying social security and FICA or, or not? In other words, is there a hidden six point two five, seven percent in there?
You're right. So a lot of them, there is that social security element that they're paying that, but the city's also paying their GMA, just like we are. But there's some cities that split the GMA cost with the employee in the city. Some places have free healthcare for the families. Some don't. Some are more generous than others. Forest Parks, their family medical is like fourteen or fifteen dollars every two weeks. So it's a lot of differences in municipalities and counties. Tech Farm Cars is one of them. Some, some have, you know, miles or how long. There's different hiring incentives, two thousand, five thousand dollar hiring bonuses. So it's, it's a wide given across the state. But the most competitive in the, in the state is, is metro Atlanta. The further you get outside metro Atlanta, I mean, there's cops that are making ten dollars an hour in South Georgia. But the most competitive is right here in metro.
Well, let's, let's put together something, right? Because I know that's a broad brush, but, yeah, from a city council perspective, think of it as strive to achieve. Just because we're broke, doesn't mean we don't have to have direction. And we have to have a, a goal. So if our goal says, and let's just grab Hayfield, let's say, hey, Hayfield's at forty-eight thousand, all right? And let's compare. I don't know that it is or it isn't. Now, if Hayfield's all by itself, and it just wants to be the best, because College Park used to be up there a long time, too, right? And it just refused to be less, right? I would want it to be the top. Maybe I can't afford to be the top. But I'm not gonna sit at the bottom. It's not gonna happen, you know? So I want to know what to strive to achieve for. And that basically says, there's gonna be some number eventually I'm gonna have to have, right? Says, I'm gonna need another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Right now, that's a wish, right? But hold that thought, you know? The city's done amazing things before. But I want to know what the number is. So however we put that together, apples and apples comparisons, you know, something real, and something that goes to everybody. You know, I don't want to have them on this little retirement issue, but I don't care if they're thirty-five or fifty-five. I want the average person, who's not gonna serve that long, right? Gonna be here eight, ten years, you know? He's gonna go onto another department, a big department, not, not because of pay, but because y'all don't die. You know, y'all stay there, you know? So he wants advancement in his career, and that means he's probably gonna have to move on. And that's fair, right? Because we can't, we can't be, you know, a ten thousand, well, a hundred thousand city. I mean, odds of us getting a population like that are impractical, right? You want to chime in, chief?
Similar to what Chief Yelwes saying, Hayfield is our biggest competitor. I guess they are almost identical in population size, number of employees, number of calls, all that stuff. And they start paramedics at fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. And we're at forty-one thousand, and I've been there for years. I think probably ten years, and our starting pay has been the same. So when you look at that, it's, we're behind eight ball trying to recruit. I guess we have great retirement. I don't know what Hayfield is, but when people are just scanning ads or whatever, the main thing they're looking at is at Hayfield. And our highest paid paramedic, who's been here twenty years, is under their starting pay. I think he makes forty-nine, has some change. So, okay, well, let's, let's take this into consideration, right? That's our, that's our shot, right? Doesn't have to be perfect. And let's run some comps. And let's, let's, we want to tell the city council where we need to go. Can, can, so get there all over one day. But if I can have a development team to do their job, we can help to do your job, right? And we'll get, theoretically, that's disparaging against anybody here. I don't know, have to be clear. But if we pay them well, we'll attract them. If we don't pay them well, we get what's left. And I don't mean that they're all the same. You know, y'all doing a good job.
True.
But give it your.
The application that's coming in there, just, I, I, I read it in all that, that I'm looking at issues. And I will, to hire an issue, I want to just do more work and try to hire the right person and not have liability on the city by negligent hire, basically.
I get it, I get it. But I think that would also help, you know, in that other conversation, where we hire people with intelligence. We expect intelligence, right? So that's there. So that's on your paycheck. Anybody else want to chime in on that? All right. Like I said, I can't promise a ten grand. I can just tell you, we'll work a lot off to see what we can do for you, okay? Another thing to pay attention to is, you know, we're a diverse community. I don't know how many women we have working here. It's a bunch, you know? A whole lot more than I had when I was years ago. Yeah, so I think y'all outnumber us now, but that's, that's male and female. It doesn't play the easy one, right? But let's say I've got a female paramedic, and I've got a male paramedic. Can somebody honestly tell me that our, our pay is equal? You know, I don't know if it is or it isn't. I'm just saying, when's the last time somebody looked? I've been in ten years, tried, but I, so all I would say is, I hope that you're gonna do the same work, that you get the same pay. But I want somebody to prove it to me, right? Keep, keep our issues small. Same thing with Peggy, right? So if I've got side by side, and, you know, with, with one exception, I mean, if your performance evaluation says you suck, I don't have a problem with that. But, but let's just say if I've got the right people, then let's prove it, okay? Then let's also look at our diversity. Who do we have? So if we're underrepresented in Hispanic communities, can't we go get one, right? And, and I mean, it's not like where somebody says you can't, you just know where you recruit, right? So I probably wouldn't recruit in Forsyth. Not that Forsyth, but that Forsyth, right? Yeah. So what are we doing to address that? Fair? Not fair. Language issues. Do we have somebody who speaks language? I know we're, we did better for a while. But none of that shows up in your reports, right? So this is where you come in there and as you get back on the team, you're, you're going, I want to know this, right? You have your budget. I want to know your people. I want to know their skills, right? Want to make sure they're in the right spot. Want to make sure we're not treating somebody poorly. At least be able to, you know, stand here with a straight face and say, I don't think we are, right? Any issues with any of that? Any comments, city council?
No comment from me.
You asked me when we're getting ready to leave, that's what she's saying. No, no comment? Ms., Ms. Knight, any comments?
I'll let you do all the talking.
That's easy.
We may regret it, but I'll let you do the talking.
Yeah, well, okay. But nobody disagrees with that, right? I mean, that's common sense. But, but if we haven't looked at it in a while, then I, I just can say, I don't know. If I don't know, I want to know, right? And then you should want to know, too, I assume, right? So economic development director, you know, move forward on that, right? It is a department, a real department. It's in your city chart. These people don't exist. I don't understand why, you know? If we lose two hundred and fifty million dollars, if things aren't moving right, we need more money. That's what happens when you don't. When you say it's not important, we'll cut that person out, yeah? If you're doing a little more for city than it should be, right? So if they aren't doing their job, get rid of them and get a good one or another one, you know, if nothing else, fire them all and keep going until you finally get one that works. But you cannot sit still, because that's how we pay our bills. Just, just a fact, right? So we will bring that, that's your next job interview for whenever that happens, but let's assume soon. And I would, I would like to see on the structure that that planning and zoning goes out as a department. Anybody have any issues with that?
Repeat that.
In other words, your economic development director isn't sitting out there all by himself as, as a, a department. Your planning and zoning is normally under your department. So planning and zoning is, is that Ms. Tracy?
Yes, sir.
Randy, the force or somehow.
She's zoning and Randy is coaching.
Okay. But that's your, that's your three, if you will. It's not a very big department, but they all work together. In other, in other words, it's aligned interests, right? So the guy at the top, lady at the top, is working really, really hard to get businesses in the city. It only makes sense to make sure all those people who have something to do with permits and different things like that. You always hear people say, cut red tape, right? Walk you through, that's the other one, right? You bring somebody in, somebody walks you through. So that means you're not sitting out here forever. It may be that you ultimately walk them to the city council, or you walk them through the planning and zoning board or something like that. But it's, you know, time is there for people who build, you know, if they're gonna build here. We got to have it clean, and then we've got to be able to sell it, right? And we have to know what it is we're trading, if we're gonna trade something. I know we've had some conversations about business license or tax incentives or something. Let's wait until we get the person on the ground, and then let's see what kind of experience they bring to the town. Don't know, but, but they may surprise us with some of their answers, even in, you know, regular questions and answering in the air, okay? But, but I assure you, they should bring value to the town. It may not be dollars in your pocket, but if they will improve value of this city, that's dollars in your pocket. Because remember, you can turn the lights on. Four percent, four percent of your power goes sitting out here today, gets into the city's pocket, private service, whatever. So it's important to know. The other two, I just don't know what we're gonna do about this. We, we, we just don't have a budget, right? In the current budget you have, we're, we're kind of using those tourism funds to pay the one, the hundred and eight thousand dollars for the, the, to start the parking lot over at South Lake, right? So that's something we're working on, but we haven't accomplished that yet. And then part of the economic developers' money is coming out of that pool, too. So less general fund money, and now the other one's a little tight, right? So we, we don't have a spare, but we need them. We just can't afford them right now. Any comments on that? Strive to achieve, Jeff, okay? This next one, item seven, finance committee appointment. I, I cannot emphasize it enough that it is ultimately the city council's responsibility to do all this. No matter what happens, whether we know about it or don't know about it, it's our fault, right? We, we don't have the luxury of missing, right? And we have lots of missing pieces even before we get into the budget. It's not, I'm not talking about Angela or anything along those lines. This comes down to reality. So reality is we have three million dollars on our books that makes us look like we've got three million dollars more in the bank than we do. At any point in time, somebody could fix that, and they didn't do it. If you had to rely on that money, it doesn't exist, right? That means you need somebody who understands finance, paying attention to it, more than just somebody who's actually just doing the books every day, right? From a city council perspective, okay? From a City Council perspective, okay? Do you have?
So I'm gonna chime in at this point, because I do have an issue. Uh, there seems to be a lack of transparency and thought. This was something that was, and I address this for the last meeting. There are items that are on the work person agenda attached to one name with the appearance that a decision has been made.
It has.
With no, with, with no conversation amongst the council to understand the scope of what this committee is going to be doing, making sure that we're not overstepping the bounds of council responsibility with regard to not being a part of day-to-day operations. If this is something that at the pleasure of the mayor wants to create a committee for, then I certainly think we need to take a look at making sure that we have an ethics board to make sure that how we operate as a council and a city has the opportunity to, to be reviewed if there are issues or problems that are brought to the table.
Uh, just, you know, take a step back and let's look at, you know, roles of responsibility, right? Generally, I don't vote mayor's position. Don't worry about who's in it, right? But one of your responsibilities or one of your abilities, right, is to appoint a committee. So, I didn't make it up. It's been in the charter for twenty years, okay? Uh, you could have all kinds of committees. I'm not a big committee person, right? Uh, that doesn't mean it doesn't have the value, right? You could have an investigative committee, which means we go out and we find stuff, we bring it to the City Council. It could mean you could do an oversight committee. Well, Van's got the experience. She's got the finance background and she certainly knows what to look for, okay?
Uh, may I?
Yes.
Finance committee?
Well, it is. And the only reason I said finance committee is, is I want her to have the ability to look at the city's system, okay? Uh, that's it. We're not changing anything. We're not rewriting anything. We're not rewriting policy or anything along those lines. And I'll, I'll give you something.
You have the authority now as a council member, requesting a former city manager.
Not even close, right? Uh, if, if some of this stuff would have been done in the past, I wouldn't be asking for it now, right? If somebody could tell me with a straight face why some of this stuff took place, great, yeah.
Um, okay, I have a, I have a, a question on this, um, and I'd like to be able to, for my own, um, clear conscience.
Assistant?
To get this, um, opinion from the attorney.
Yeah, oh.
And, um, make sure that we're in compliance and explain.
Really need two opinions. You need one from the city attorney and another one to make sure we're on point.
Exactly.
Make sure what our, our abilities, um, but it's specifically written in your city charter.
Well, and, and the authority of this committee person or committee people, it's just the person.
It's quite as big one.
Yeah, the authority over the finance department, you know?
It wouldn't be authority over the finance department. What you have is the, the finance department responds to the city manager, right? The committee has the ability to look at your material, to be honest.
I, I understand.
If somebody wanted to go through the effort, you could file an open records request and every single thing that Van would be able to look at, you would be able to look at too. It would take them forever to find it, right, and make it available to you. But there is nothing that you're gonna look at that you're not entitled to look at under the, uh, the open record. Nothing.
Right, so, uh, my position would be as city manager, if a council person wants to see something, we shouldn't be asking them to file an open record request.
That's exactly right.
They should just be getting it, right?
Uh, well, that's a theory, but, but the theory is, let's make it as easy as possible. Now, if y'all want to go along for the ride, go for it. I don't care. Um, but as far as, I don't want, I don't want to make it where somebody could say, well, I'm interfering. I'm not interfering. I'm reading something I have the right to actually do.
Right, well, I, I just like to have it explained and all transparent, make sure that, um, that it's.
And, and, and proper transparency, remember, when it ends up on a work session, the idea of a work session is to discuss it.
I understand.
That's why it's right here.
I understand.
So you can't say it's not transparent. Transparent would be if we did it and we didn't tell you.
I understand.
That's not transparent. I, I, it hasn't been enacted.
Well, at this point, it wasn't transparent in the sense that the decision was made to identify the one person.
That's right.
So that's not transparent.
But if I'm going to tell you who it is.
So again, if, if this is the direction that we're going to move in, then we certainly need to make sure that we institute an ethics board so that whether it's city hall staff or citizens or someone on the council has an issue, there is somewhere that they can apply their complaint to, and that is part of the charter.
Is that a standing at the tour?
I mean, we don't have an ethics board.
You don't have an ethics board, but there's, there's a policy for that somewhere.
And, um, but, you know, obviously to.
There is.
You have the authority to create any committee you want. Um, but I hear what the council's saying and that I will be doing is, we want to hear from both our attorney and our auditor that.
I'm comfortable with the candor. The question's gonna come down to what's the methodology to keep us and between the navigational beings, right? That's really what it comes down to.
So I, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to pose the question that we know the answer to. You have the authority to create a committee and put whomever on it you want to please. What is the question the council wants to hear the answer to?
Well, I think the question is, they want to, they want to confirm what I think I know.
Very good.
Correct.
Right.
I've been wrong before, but it's in it and it's, it's included and it doesn't get used very often, but, but you know.
May, can, can I, can I, can I just ask one thing?
Yes, please.
Um, so the, the, this person is responsible for?
Not responsible for. This person is going to look at things that are readily available. So let's say I create a PDF of all the checks the city signed last month. You can look at it. I can look at it. They already created the PDF. We're not creating something new. We're not adding something. We're just gonna have a person who's gonna go in and look at it, right?
To see if everything that the finance department has done is correct.
Well, it's not so much correct, that's the audit responsibility.
So within, so within your capacity. Oversight and internal audit control. Is this city, is this committee of one want to report to the council as a member of the council already? I, I mean.
Well, why wouldn't they?
Let's make sure.
Is, is to sit there and.
Already serving, already serving on the council with the ability to request information.
Correct.
That being designated as a committee of one to create an additional report.
It's not an additional report. I mean, you're, you're basically have the same abilities. Go look at it if that's what you want. I'm just saying, I choose to set up a committee because I am not comfortable with a number of financial things that have happened over several years. And nobody can tell me that they can be comfortable with that. Too many things happen. I mean, we've got the, the boards and authorities that owe money that might not get paid. Selling properties are not supposed to sell, right? Collecting one point five million dollars, you got eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your pocket that you got from it. Tell me that somebody should have been paying attention to that, right?
Okay.
And so what is, what is the goal and the outcome? Is this person going to make recommendations? Who are they making recommendations to? What is the scope of the responsibility of this committee that you're forming? Share the understanding so that all have full understanding.
It's just basically saying, we, we want to be able to make sure they understand that we have a right to review, right? And I'm, I'm just picking somebody who's got finance experience, who's dealt with our software, who knows our city, right?
Did you say that it, it, it's okay to have a council member or someone outside of the council?
You can do both.
Why did you choose inside the council instead of outside?
Because in this particular case, I got somebody who's been at the city ten years. Knows the people that are in there, can use the software that you have and knows what she's looking at. Her skills and abilities as a financial analyst, it's not that complicated.
So, so that's not, um, having council manage?
It, it's not a management. We want you to put eyes.
Oversight, overseer.
I don't really want to call it oversight.
Overseer of finance department?
She needs to run her side, right? We're over here just reviewing paperwork. We got the right to review it in the first place.
So oversight was the word that you used previously, I mean, not less than ten minutes ago. So again, if this is the direction that we're going to go in, we need to make sure that we apply the, the scope of an ethics board so that if there is an issue amongst citizens with regard to the things that are being formed, they have a, and they have the ability and an outlet to apply their grievance or complaint for, for whatever purpose.
I'm clueless what you got there, but let's take a look at it. I, I, I think you're talking apples and oranges, but. Somebody's supposed to have a board. Let's go figure out what to put on it. I don't problem with that. But I do want to pay attention to, like, for lots of different reasons. We're gonna go into a tough year. We don't have the ability to, to make it. So I want a review. That's just a fact. And, and I think we got the right to review it anyway, but setting up a committee, because it's within our building. Yeah, and it shouldn't take an offensive, you know, because it's not. If, if I thought it was an offensive thing, I'd probably tell you.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. I, I just, I have to say this.
Please.
I'm gonna give the, give the language that was provided to me by you.
Okay.
With regard to, you have your team that you trust. So when you say I shouldn't take offense to something, it's not about taking offense. It's being above board, transparent, because the language that was provided to me is the team that you have that you trust. So let's make the plan feel equitable across all council members, across for all citizens, staff members. An ethics board is done.
We'll look at it, right? Any other issues on the subject, Mayor?
I think so too also, um, and I would really like to have the attorneys.
I'll do that. I'll get the attorney and then we'll get the auditor's opinion.
And I, I'm not prepared to have another committee yet, because I have no idea what the committee would be. Um, but whatever the answer is.
One person, you're saying committee?
But you can. You can have a committee of one. There's no, there's no setting up. Yeah, I'm just trying to use something that makes common sense, right? And you've just got, okay, it's fairly, it's fairly controlled. It's something you have a right to do too, door.
I understand that.
And the citizens that are out there have the exact same information.
You said, it's the word, it's the words that you use sometimes that.
Probably.
Is not quite clear, you know, it's.
Well, you ever ask me to repeat myself, I generally.
So when you say committee, I end up looking for more, more than one.
Well, the reason I say committee is because that's how specifically listed in the charter. But it doesn't have limits. It doesn't say, you know, five people, three people, whatever. There are investigative committees, not investigative committees, right? But in other cities, not saying this one, you might have a city council member who would be part of the fire department committee or the police department committee. And, but the problem at some point is if, you know, if, 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 let's say you're with the fire department and you love the fire department, well, then you start to lean toward budgeting for the fire department versus something else. Very few people are leaning toward fighting. Nothing against Angela, who wants his guy, but it's not necessarily, you know, a department where you can level with missiles.
And that, that we've discussed many, uh, retreat meetings is that how councils should not try to micromanage the staff.
She's reading the tear?
So that, that, that is where I, where the blurred line comes in. If you're just looking at stuff, you know, is one thing, but if you're.
City working.
You know, trying to manage.
I don't think.
The staff, that becomes a problem.
It does, and it's not how the city set up. Not if we want to change that. We can vote to change that too. I mean, if we want to change that directly, we can move the finance officer to basically retire him to the City Council. Take it directly away from the city. Are you proposing that?
You know, it's just that, um, at this point, this is, um, something brand new and I want to make sure that all bases are covered before I'm satisfied with it.
That's fine.
Um, because.
But let's, let's do the first part. We'll get the city attorney and we'll get, uh, an auditor to give us a recommendation as to the house, if there's a housing, right?
And Mayor, I'll also put together some sections of the code charter that, you know, just.
It's an easy read.
Yeah.
And I just, and I guess I could ask a question.
It's an easy read.
Exactly.
I told you about those words now.
Well, this one, this is. But let's ask this question, because I honestly don't know the answer. Um, you've been in a couple of years.
Yeah.
How many committees?
I'm sixty-nine years old though.
No, that's age. I'm talking about on the City Council. How many committees have they set up?
Yeah.
I don't know, right? I just know that this is my role and it makes sense. And I also know there, that a lot of numbers don't, don't add up, you know? So I want to pay attention to.
Right, I, I understand that, but, um, my position is this, writing for City Council is that I will always remain transparent and if there's anything ever that I'm not comfortable with and that I don't feel is ethical and above board, I have, I have to say something. It's my.
I'm good with it.
Right to do that and I think I owe it to the citizens of the city staff, you know, uh, to make sure that they're not under any undue stress or pressure from council regarding, you know, how their day-to-day operations are looked at, number one. Um, um, I don't know if I would like, if I would feel comfortable as a finance director and as, uh, finance staff to have, uh, a council member constantly looking over my shoulder.
Your citizen has a right to look over your shoulder already.
I understand that, but we trust, we trust, we trust our staff.
You don't trust the staff, they just came, so there's no, there's no issues there.
Right, right.
But, but when you look at it and you go, it works both ways, right? Yeah, we can sit there and say, I'm supposed to trust somebody, but they're also supposed to trust us. And at the end of the day, is that gentleman so good? You know, I know you get onto this, but that's our job.
I understand that. I understand that.
And we work for the citizen, but the employees here work for us.
We just had a conversation about, you know, how we approach things and how we're gonna work together and how we're gonna have that team building and, and it works for the mayor and council as well. If we want citizens, staff to, 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 you know, for us to have a cohesive government.
Yep, it's called storming, norming and performing, because we get used to each other.
Well, I don't know about storming. She don't know that.
I, I picked that up. That, that's, that's a real, that's a real definition.
That's them.
That's that HR stuff.
That's not, that's not moral, so moral have our own way. But I just, I just want us to walk that line, hold that line and be careful, um, about.
Fair, I got it. I heard.
Implementing.
I understand.
So I just provided you the information about the, uh, ethics board.
Oh, yeah, and, um, yeah, and I do, it is a, it is a part of the code. Because we actually had a conversation about this with this current councillor earlier this year about how there was some new code, uh, I think since you were here, Mayor Lamble, that suggested there should be an ethics board. Now, of course, you can change that again, not just that, um.
Well, the only thing I saw in the ethics board is literally because I haven't read the code, I have a particular section. Um, and I'll say it now because I haven't read it, at least not read it in a while. Um, I'm not a witch hunt type of guy, you know? So if, if we've got a witch hunt type of system, then three weeks from now, we'll start looking at how to take the witch hunt part of it out there, right? If you screwed up and you're not doing your job and you're a bad person, then let's just say you're the one. Yeah, but just throwing stuff out there just to see what sticks, probably not gonna happen. Correct. And I've read it, so.
Yeah, and in all fairness, I mean, just remember, and I can't read that small writing, but whenever it was enacted, there's never been an ethics board. So it's not like it was enacted, you know, in August of twenty nineteen and nobody's put one together. It was enacted, you know, probably ten years ago and there's never been. We, the city's never responded to it, so the question to your point, I think, is, does this current council even still want it there? If there's never been one, even though it's in the code, is it time to amend the code or is it time to put one in place?
But the.
We'll look into that.
But I'm not a witch hunter.
I think so.
All right, now, item number eight, kind of going on that. Uh, Day of the Dead, I, I'm assuming that I have a conversations about that because of COVID nineteen, naturally?
Yeah, so, um, of course, you know, uh, this will be our third annual, if, if it moves forward, Day of the Dead Festival. Um, and, you know, it's, there, we, unlike the, the Lunar New Year has been, we were able to identify a, a, a five oh one C six that would serve as the DMO for this event only.
And that was at Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, right?
And then they, and then they, uh, were able to contract with the, a, a organization that does these events in multiple. And then they, and then they were able to contract with the, a, a organization that does these events in multiple places. And so, you know, but it, it, you know, it's a, it's a fair amount of money with the threat of COVID on the table. In other words, if our fire marshal and our Maro Center, Event Center manager and best practices and the governor's office all decide that the maximum capacity for that entire building on that day is five hundred people, as opposed to whomever shows up, is, the council just needs to consider, do you really, do you wanna move forward with it? Do we wanna move it to the parking lot? Do we wanna not? I mean, I know you and I, Mayor, have talked about it, we, we don't like the idea of canceling it, but I don't know that putting just the sort of the same thing that we've done the last two years, moving forward with it, is that smart? I mean, and this is where we just need, cuz we need to get those.
But the group that put it on.
Yeah.
Could we have them come in front of us and basically kick around some ideas at a work session?
Well, I, now, these are, and I'll be quite candid, this, these are members of, of the Hispanic community and they have a heightened sense of concern about this COVID. So we can get them virtually, but I don't know how comfortable, you tell me Jasmine, is he gonna be comfortable showing up here?
Potentially the Latin American chamber maybe, but the actual person who handles the event and organizes it, I'm not.
Yeah, he's, he's just demonstrated a, a fair amount of caution. And I'll be honest with you, I don't think the Latin American chamber is the person that's gonna be able to toss around the ideas. So, but I do feel like maybe we could get a virtual conversation with, with the governor.
Well, let's, let's have a, I mean, this, the event itself, right? We know we gotta say Halloween right behind that, but that's a whole separate set of people that are doing that. But the people who have the idea, that, that see, you know, what, what we can do with it. You have to ask them and then there might be other things we can do that are, as in entertaining. And I, and I really do wish I understood the actual holiday better.
So Mayor, well, yeah. Cuz, well, it's funny that you say that, because that's what inspired this event. And even Jasmine, and when I, we, after we watched it, even she was like, you know, what is this event? Like, I mean, and it's a celebration of souls, right? Where for the, the community that, that buys into this belief that, and it's really quite beautiful that the people who've moved on have an opportunity on this day to come back and visit. It makes me proud, to visit the, the family that's still here. But in order to do that, you have to create a bridge. And that's photos and, and food and things, because if you don't remember them, they don't come back to visit you. So on this day of souls, where we as a family may gather together on the patio and have a barbecue and play music, we know that the spirits of our family are there among us. We can't see them, we can't feel them touching us, but we know they're there and they see us happy and healthy and celebrating them. And so it's sort of a hidden mutual exchange of love and appreciation. So that's what the.
So help me out with, like, the festival part. So my family, somebody dies, nobody's having a good time. Okay? So how do you, how do you eventually turn that into a festival that?
So, okay, how about an Irish wake? Okay? When the, the Irish community puts the body in the house and they all drink and tell stories about the, the memories they have. It's, it's along those lines. But now we do recognize, because we aren't adhering to the narrow definitions of how it really works, we're just celebrating the culture and that's why it's considered a festival.
But we're not, we're not stepping into anybody's cultural target.
Right, no, no, we're, we're very conscientious about and maybe we've had a great deal of conversation. And so we ceremonially celebrate, but we are not, we're not presenting it as a Day of the Dead ceremony in the sense that, okay, our spirits are among us. We're just celebrating the fact that this culture does a celebration of souls. And, and, cuz when we talked to the, to the guy who does the festival, he told us that Coco, he felt was very representative of what it really was all about. So it's, in fact, we had talked in years past about showing the movie, because it, it helps educate you, you know, through Disney.
So if, let's say we have a Hispanic event, is that, you know, I wouldn't hear when all this was decided, you know, is, is that the best one?
Well, because as I understand it.
Would we be better off flopping it for a different one?
The regions of, of Hispanic communities, just I guess like so many others, the southernmost tip may do this, the northern tip does this, the eastern, they do something a little bit more of a variation. And so, you know, that was the conversation, is which one is, is the best one to do from our perspective? And we got this advice from the, there are definitely other festivals we could do. But he just felt that for what we were, for our intent, for our facility, that the Day of the Dead, the Dia de los Muertos, was the best opportunity to celebrate the culture. Not, I mean, not to say we can't change our mind, I'm just saying that's.
Why are we asking that while we're there, especially since we got a potential challenge, right? There's a, as he changes mind, you know? And I don't know the, the different festivals, but, you know, are we better off doing Secco de Mayo? Don't ask me. But, you know, cuz when you run them back to back, that puts a lot of stress on the city too, you know, day to day.
It's Day of Independence. Day of Independence for Mexico, so we don't, Dia, Secco de Mayo would only be for Mexican culture.
Yeah.
So it's not a, all the same.
What about Secco de Mayo, do you have any insight, is that Mexican culture specific?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, cuz it's a, yeah, Independence Day.
That was fine, I mean, because we're mildsides, we all learn something in the meantime.
Sure.
And just, you know, and then, you know, what can we do if, if we had a stretch goal on that? In other words, if we wanted to really blow it out, to be able to bring a lot more traffic to the city and get them to spend the night in a hotel or whatever, whatever, cuz some of the funds come from, you know, what would we have to do to do that? May not be able to do it right now, but certainly we could say add step, add step.
Sure. And I, and of course, I, and I think that the, the, the parking lot is a good sort of transition, but of course, you're always subject to weather. And last year, you know, Sa- Sa- Halloween got totally rained out. Or was it the other way around? Yeah, Sa- Halloween got totally rained out and had to be rescheduled to the same day of the Day of the Dead. So we had this simultaneous.
Why couldn't you use the, the old time district over there?
For Sa- Halloween?
No, for Day of the Dead.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, they, you know, it's just always the infrastructure of the center has the bathrooms, has the kitchen, so we can maintain food, but I don't know.
I don't know about that festival, I'm just going, versus Hot House.
So what I feel like is, and anybody who has experience, chime in, cuz I'm certain we're not the festival aficionado. But food is paramount and music is paramount, it seems, to every cultural festival that we look at. So one of the reasons that makes Lunar New Year or Day of the Dead easier, if you will, is having the access to the kitchen. Warmers, sinks. But again, I mean, food festivals happen all the time outdoors, so I, I don't think it's inconceivable that it couldn't happen there. It's just we didn't do it there.
Let's ask them.
Didn't they do, like, for the kids and stuff, have costume changes and all that? I think they did, didn't they?
They had face painting where they would do the.
I mean, for the access, for the kids that, the kids that did dances, did they do costume changes?
Yeah, so they would need, some of them had to change their clothes. And I, if, if you don't mind me, I just wanna add, in the Hispanic culture, there is, in, in all regions, some sort of all saints day, just like it is in the. The, the difference is the different parts of the, the Hispanic culture, whether you're from Central America, South America, the Caribbean islands, that's where the different, the way that they celebrate is different. So we may not do skulls, but there is a belief that, you know, you, you remember your family, but there may not be the same belief of they're actually coming over to visit. It's just different, or having an altar to represent them. So it's all, it's different, but it is, the Dia de los Muertos is very popular in all of the cultures, so you can, it is very easy to tie it in together. But there may be others, so that is something to discuss, but I didn't wanna mention, it's not solely just a Mexican culture.
Yes, I need to find a biggest one, the best one that we can do well.
Well, you look at some of the pictures, they're amazing. And we wish we could maybe one day grow into, just, I mean, they're just, you know, I feel like with every cultural festival, with the food and the music and the colors, it's just a really opportunity to, you know, do something very valuable. And we've got a really good response. We, with the Dia de los Muertos, we had a very good response from the school system. Lots of school kids came to that and some teachers gained extracurricular activ, uh, extra credit if they showed up for the festival. And so.
Well, and basically the, the younger group that's out there right now in the city of Marl is coming out strong in this back, right there. That's the, that's half your future, right there. All right, let's, let's bring him in, see what he can. Freedom Fest update?
Uh, Freedom Fest.
Uh, she's calling.
Look at.
Uh, we're closed, we're closed, I don't, let me see if there's anything else in there to kick it.
Did you want me to talk about Freedom Fest or what?
Yeah, please.
So obviously, we will have a, I can't remember if I mentioned at the last meeting, we will be spray painting spaces on the ground for families to convene as, you know, family units. They will be spaced out strategically. There'll be signage placed, obviously, throughout, you know, keep your distance and be free friendly about that kind of thing. We do have the live band and the fireworks. And that is the core of Freedom Fest this year, instead of, as we've mentioned, all of the things that promote congested lines. We really weeded out and tried to minimize. There will be two food trucks, we did have a third food vendor that has since canceled. They just couldn't get comfortable with the exchange of money. They didn't wanna take cash, they didn't have a way to set up a credit card payment. Their corporate people in the end just said, no, it was a city of Marl business. So we're, we're encouraging people to pack picnics and you may have already received your postcard, I don't know if you did.
Which language?
Yeah, Dorothy did, she got the wrong one. We're gonna fix that.
Which language did we give you?
No, 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 not the wrong language that we get, she got her neighbors, but that's really a post office thing, cuz we mailed them.
The, the label had her name on my address.
Okay, yeah, okay, so that, that's a fix we can make.
I'll send it something Spanish, they never know what it says.
Hey, my neck next to our neighbor.
Amazing, Nancy will read it for you.
I can get them.
And so we are gonna close off the streets this year, as we've talked about. So we will not be able to have the fire apparatus parked within the, the campus, because they have to be able to get out easily. We may wanna stage them somewhere and we have a follow-up meeting about that. You know, we, once the, once we feel we're at capacity, then we will not be letting anybody else into the, you know, shut, shut off roads. We do have the bathrooms in the church that are being prepped and will be sanitized regularly through, with the foggers that we use with the fire department throughout the event. And then we have the transmission, the, the transmitters did come in, so we'll have them at the band and so people can tune into their radio station.
Did anybody test it, how far those things work?
It's a, it's far, it's like, what did you say? You could do, set it up at the Boone's office across the street and we could hear it over here.
So technically, if somebody wanted to sit in Walmart parking?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Or on top of the, the, the town center over there? You know, if they sat on the parking deck over there?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Cuz people, people naturally go to wherever else is left. You know, it's just a matter of just kind of staging.
You know, we, we find that our only, your real challenge is, we don't have the, the volunteer resources that we've had in the past. We have, before, we've had local churches that may, you know, we may make a two hundred dollar donation to their youth group and they show up and keep the garbage picked up or come the next day, but none of the parents are, are okay with that scenario this year, so go ahead.
And I just wanna mention, it does reach very far, but the further you get, the poorer the quality is.
So the, the radius for the transmitter emitter is only between twelve hundred feet to fifteen hundred. So when you go further out, you will lose the signal.
And remember that the transmitters were not purchased for Freedom Fest, they're purchased for setting the cord up, which we know they're.
But we're cheating, yeah.
Yeah, so, but we're just gonna see what we can do with it. And, and I did, actually Chris from Factory Fireworks called me today. They had been interested in trying to do maybe like a pre-show demonstration and then have some collateral about, you know, fireworks, fireworks safety. And so anyway, we were just talking today, he wants to still do it, but, you know, he just, we're just trying to figure out how to make it work. And then there'll be sanitation, hand sanitizing stations set up, you know, just on tables throughout the park. You know, it's really, it's a very basic event this year, which from a planning perspective makes it so much easier. But as to what we talked about earlier, I do feel like there's gonna be so many people anxious just to get out. Sitting on a blanket with my family, listening to live music and watching fireworks, that's pretty awesome right now, right? Cuz I don't have a lot of chances to do it.
You know, and I admit, not everybody might agree with this, but, you know, it's about as inclusive as you can get, you know? Pride, country, you know, not everybody might buy into that, but most people will. And that, that'll be a time to, you know, we're not, there, there's not as much of a, you know, what, today's political day, right? I mean, for the most part, our elections are over, so as soon as we get some of that stuff fine, as maybe the temperature will come down just a little bit. Be a good time to, you know, sit back, listen, enjoy your day, hopefully.
And we got a really big American flag to hang from the church. Number one, to celebrate the heroes, to sort of establish an expression of patriotism, that it also serves as a pretty cool backdrop for everybody who wants to take a picture.
Who will listen to us all the heroes? Obviously, police, fire, EMS, but are we doing nurses too, or what, what's the?
Well, yeah, it'll be all, the, the, the expression of the heroes is medical staff and, and first responders, you know? But, and we'll just periodically, you know, have comments made throughout the, the evening. One of the things we had talked about was sometimes we have more than one entertainer, but everybody's microphones, nobody wants anybody, you know? So we just, we got one band, we got a huge set of fireworks and lots of space to come out and be comfortable.
Well, you know, fireworks is what really draws the people.
Sure.
That's the time that they really start coming is.
I never read it, don't you? Listen to, walk on, everybody's good.
But, I mean, last year and the year before that too, we started to really see a better mix of our diverse community. In fact, we're like, I remember walking around that year, asking people like, why, why are you here this year when we never have seen you before? Really young people, lots of college students. I mean, it's just, it's just cool, it's a great amount of energy for the, not just for the fireworks, but just to be in the field and, and hanging out, you know?
And it's not just people from Maro, it's.
Oh, no, no.
There was some people from, um, um, Smirnoff.
Yeah, we have people from.
I'm like, really?
There's one couple that, the year it rained really badly, they had come, they come from out of state every year to our event and they stay in our hotel. And so their big question was, okay, well, if it's rained out, when are we gonna redo it? And I, I don't think it's the year it was tomorrow, so they ended up missing the event that year. But they, it was like Kentucky, I wanna say, they said they come here every year and they stay in our hotels for the weekend. Now, you know, maybe there's only a handful of those, but that was cool, we were pretty excited about that.
Well, we'll take it, we'll take it. Let me, can we just do the last one there? On, on the, did Warren submit us anything on his marketing?
Uh, what? Well, you know, we put it out for, for question.
No, no, not that one. So, so we know we had Conference Center marketing issues. And then the questions came back as, you know, he had his, his list, then we also had.
Hillary.
Yes, her list. But, but when you realistically looked at the options, you know, there was nobody at the airport right now. So, so the ones that were, were listed, rack cards made sense as long as we could come up with a distribution method. And then I, I think I sent an email and it was referencing event plan. In other words, people that are actually gonna put people out there as event plan. Some of these other guys, you know, Facebook and some others, I know he's advertising on that, but, you know, I wanna pull the trigger on some of that, but I thought he was gonna bring us something today that would say, how would you market to event planners? What would it be and what would it cost? So we could turn something loose or give them some feedback.
Well, that would be my misunderstanding, because I thought when we talked about it last time, we wanted both the mobile app and the marketing to be put out for RFP.
That's, that's your, your mobile app, yes, but the, that, that's a different section. But we already have one private sector ideas, à la carte, if you will, and we can still get more. And then we have Warren's ideas, which are relevant and just maybe not timely. But the idea was to, to, to target an event planning group somehow, tell us, I mean, that's how you do it, right?
Okay, okay. Are you talking about where he, he was, he was creating those events within the Maro Center?
This was, this was, well, technically, yes, but, but let's say we want somebody to use the Maro Center, right? And the options that he's giving us right now, in other words, you wouldn't pull the trigger on it, cuz there's nobody there for it. We wouldn't do X, cuz, you know, it's an end user, right? The lady who's gonna have a bridal shower or something like that. But, but a person who is an event planner by trade might have fifteen events this year. What can we do to convince them to allow us? Does that make sense?
It doesn't, no.
And that's a strategy. So it says if our strategy, that's our target, then, then what's he doing to hit that target? How are you gonna hit the target? What's it gonna cost? That one made sense, because those event planners are out there trying to do stuff, man. The rest of it, maybe not so much. All right.
Can I, uh?
Yes, ma'am.
Number twenty.
Number twenty?
Yeah, Maro Station Park?
Yes. Do we close it?
Yes, we have the keys.
Okay. Let's. Okay. Um, let's, um, just simply because of the, the economy that's there, if, if we're not gonna use the, the house on Meadowbrook for COVID-19, right? Let's come up with a way to lease that property and then let's go ahead and try to lease that one. At least we can make $800 to $1,000 a month while we're coming up with a plan. Does that make sense? Um, I've been in it. It's a three-bedroom, one bath. Um, it's dated, you know, from the standpoint of, similar to the one that's over, it's not as old as the one that was in, uh, on Meadowbrook. Uh, they took the tub out, so, so we need, so we could drop another tub back in there. Uh, it's up cheap. Uh, but there shouldn't be any reason. It's a, it's a wonderful little piece of property and the house is built really well. Uh, but obviously, you wouldn't keep it long term. But for right now, there's no reason not to make, you know, key somebody, and it's nobody tears it up, you know?
And I assume they pay for their own utility?
Oh, absolutely. All we're doing is just giving them a cheap house to, but let's, let's make sure we don't have a problem. But we don't wanna, you know, you don't wanna mind.
Don't go.
And, you know, if you lease both those properties, that's a couple grand a month. Over the course of a year, you're gonna get, you know, $24,000. That'll help cover what we pay for.
And the other part of that, you know, we're over there, the community garden is over there. So, um, and we need to know if there is some niggles on that property, if it is, how long do we have to be there so that, um, you know, we're-
One of the things I like to do is, uh, we need to take a tour, a tour, right? Good, go on, let's discuss.
Locations.
Well, the locations, that's on city property, right? And, and the loca-, yes, okay? But, but also more from a vision standpoint of, let's just call it garden stuff. I, I don't know, but trail system, garden, whatever you wanna call it. We, we know we got a Callaway Gardens ability down the street that looks pretty good. We know we got Freedom Parkway up there that's got some really nice, where it's set up, so that we all kinda-
See it?
Right? Like, like lifetime. You stand up there and say, that is what I want.
Okay.
Um, and then that is what we're gonna tell the Department Works Director to do. May not do it all in a day, but it will remarkably change what you're visually seeing at the garden plus whatever your greens mix. There's no reason not to tie it together. I mean, that's what, that's, anybody who does this, it may not be garden, garden stuff, but maybe somebody has an interest in somebody else. We, we certainly can't leave it the way it is. It, it, it just looks terrible. I mean, we could do much better than that. And I'll take you out to it. You'll tell me that, what you see.
I certainly will.
I know you will. But, but I, I think you'll enjoy it. I really do.
Well, there's some things too that, um, you know, I have to, then you have stuff on, because, um, being such a young man as yourself, you don't probably think about certain things.
Ma'am, did you untouch the base without the water? Have you all got a water report that I sent out?
Yes, and, and did, uh, the, remember two weeks ago or so, we, we basically had the agreement to do the MS4 report for the Water Authority? You've now got a copy of that and now we've decided. It basically said, we looked at it, we reviewed it, and to the best of our knowledge, the experts basically tell us it's what's supposed to happen. So, not a consent, if somebody had it. All right, we're gonna call it. Anybody have any other issues? Um, Ms. Knight, you there? Everything good?
Yes.
I'm still here. Um, I will, while the school council is here and paying attention, we do have the Black Heritage Festival on the work session agenda for discussion. And again, in the spirit of transparency for the sake of conversation that we had earlier, I suggest we have a committee. That way, everyone is fully aware of our intention to make sure that the plans move forward.
Well, how about we put you in charge of that committee there, Ms. Knight? Um, all I gotta say is, um, you know, let, let's, you know, if we get so tied up into art that we can't bring reasonable people to come see it, um, we might've missed the boat. So, give me Denzel Washington and Hunt for Run October and go look at something. But, uh, help me out. Give me a reason to come to your festival.
I'll give you a Netflix streaming password so you can watch Denzel Washington. Black Heritage Festival couldn't be about Denzel Washington.
Something like that. How about that? You know, something, I'm su- I'm sure there's a lot of art people out there somewhere, right? I don't, I don't know how many of our citizens that's gonna be.
Yeah, we're gonna need some young folk too.
Oh, absolutely. I, I feel it, Angel. You all right? Long day?
What?
That's really good. That's really good.
Okay, wait.
All right, call it. Thank you.